Okay. It's 7 o'clock, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm Susan Craig, Vice Chair, standing in for Mike Hench tonight, who's absent. We have with us Wade Elliott, Padron Townsend, and Craig. Now, the next item on the agenda is public discussion of any item that is not on the agenda. Anyone from the public would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none of that, we'll move on to our main order of business tonight, which is discussing with staff the zoning code amendment items. Over to you.
Thank you. Kirk Lehman, Associate Planner, here to talk about the proposed amendments to the zoning code to try to improve housing choice, increase the housing supply, and encourage affordability. So this has been a long time coming. We've talked about it a couple times prior to this, and now we're moving forward with So just in terms of some background, I mean, as the planning commission, you often see that Iowa City's housing market is uniquely expensive in Iowa. And as a result, the city has taken increasing steps to try and facilitate the creation of affordable housing, especially for low-income households. And when it comes to creating those affordable housing opportunities, sometimes it comes in the form of trying to create housing choice for housing types that might be more affordable to folks. Sometimes it's a matter of decreasing lot sizes or things to try and increase density that can provide more affordable housing options. But one of the first questions that we often get when bringing up this topic is just what is affordable housing? What are low-income folks? What does that look like? And so most of these definitions that we use for affordable housing in Iowa City are tied to the standards that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development uses, or HUD, as I'll call them throughout. And they generally hold that affordable housing is a household paying less than 30% of their gross income on housing costs. That includes not just rent and mortgage payments, but it also includes any taxes or fees that are part of that. It does also include utilities as well. And when I talk about low-income households, I'm specifically talking about those who make less than 80% of the area median income. So to put that in a context, for a family of four, we're talking about $92,000 in Iowa City. We actually have a relatively high household income that qualifies for that. But we do, depending on programs that you'll see, use different standards as well. So often, we distinguish between owner-occupied and renter-occupied households, because renter-occupied households tend to have somewhat lower incomes. So there, you might look at less than 60% of the area median income, or just shy of $70,000 for a family of four. So those are kind of the definitions that we use. That being said, you know, often, housing that's available for lower-income households may not be affordable for them. Sometimes, housing that is affordable for those families might not meet their needs. So you might have a family of five, living in a one-bedroom apartment, because that's all they can afford. So those are all related issues. It's a very large, complex situation that depends on incomes, depends on the employment opportunities that are there, and education, and a number of other factors, including the cost of housing. So really, what we're focusing on for this amendment is primarily on that supply of housing, because that's primarily what the zoning code has the most impact on. But we do also try to encourage income-restricted affordable housing as part of this amendment as well. So some factors just affecting housing affordability in Iowa City are especially the fact that Iowa City's a desirable place to live. It's been continually growing pretty much as long as it's been around, and a large part of that is due to the high quality of life here. But it's also due to strong job opportunities with the University of Iowa, with the University of Iowa Health Care and Clinics, that provide a strong economic base for the area. And then also growth by students, as the university has expanded. Things like that might change in the future, but we anticipate continued growth due to those, the desirable characteristics of living in Iowa City. And one of the problems with that is it's great for the city, but it also does create challenges, like housing affordability, when the supply of housing doesn't quite meet that demand. So we presented that analysis a couple months back now. I don't quite remember when. That looked at the supply of housing that's been added to the market recently, and it isn't quite meeting up with the anticipated demand that we see in Iowa City over the next 10 years. And that's been a problem that we think has been happening for some time. In terms of other things that can influence housing choice and supply, the zoning code is one of them, and that's really why we're bringing these amendments before you today, because the zoning code is the way that the city implements its comprehensive plan and district plans. So it can talk about, you know, what uses go where, how land can be used, how land can be developed, and those sorts of things. So as the zoning code is its implement in the comprehensive plan, there are obviously lots of goals in the comprehensive plan, and it's a matter of balancing those goals. So we constantly have to reassess what within the zoning code makes sense. It is a living document, and make sure that it complies with our current plans and policies and policy decisions. So that's really what we're trying to do with the proposed amendment today. And like I said, this has been a pretty long-going process in terms of background. So we've pretty much been engaged in the public in earnest, especially since 2016, when we adopted our first Affordable Housing Action Plan. So as part of that, that did include some regulatory changes that are being rolled into this amendment. We also had our 2019 Fair Housing Choice Study that was adopted, which did find that lack of affordable rental housing, or the survey found that lack of affordable rental housing was a significant fair housing issue within the city. And so it recommended improving housing choice as a strategy to try and help compact that somewhat. And then again, in 2022, we updated our Affordable Housing Action Plan more recently, which has additional regulatory changes that are, some of which are included in this amendment. And Council's strategic plan that was just adopted for the next five years also supports the implementation of this. So like I said, the proposed code amendments that you'll see before you today, or that we're talking about today, are really the culmination of this process, where we've been engaging with the public for the past eight years, and we're trying to bring some of these to fruition. In terms of that, I did also just want to say that, you know, none of these are silver bullet. None of these are going to fix the issue completely. But really, what we're trying to do is, again, balance some of those goals within our zoning code and bring it into better alignment with the policies that we have today.
So can I ask a question now?
Yeah, sure.
So what's our role tonight?
So that's a great question. Our role tonight is, this is the introduction to the topic. So because it's such a broad topic, we wanted to kind of give you an idea of the code amendments that staff is thinking of. We provided general descriptions within this memo, and I'll kind of go through those today. And then we'll basically give you a month to marinate on it as we finalize our analysis, finalize the text itself of the zoning code amendment, and then we'll bring that before you, before the public, for a decision in August.
Okay.
So the goal is to bring you the full amendment on that first meeting of August. This is just that introductory, kind of primer meeting, if you will.
Thank you.
I'm glad you asked me that, because I wanted to mention that, and I forgot. So thank you. Yeah, so in terms of the amendment itself, then, it kind of has five subparts to it, I would say. A lot of them are related, so you'll notice there might be some overlap, or I might kind of skip some of my descriptions that I have in the memo. But they are all related to try and increase affordable housing choice, or increase housing choice, increase the supply of housing, and generally, increase housing affordability. So that includes things like increasing flexibility for a range of housing types, again, to improve housing choice, to modify some design standards to reduce the cost of construction, with a goal of not substantially impacting the goals of those multifamily site development standards, which is to create safe, attractive, and pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. We're looking at providing additional flexibility and enhancing the supply of housing by modifying some dimensional standards, by looking at our regulatory barriers to accessory apartments. And then we're also looking at creating incentives for income-restricted affordable housing. So those incentives in the form of density bonuses and parking restrictions, or parking reductions, similar to what we've seen with the solar amendment that we recently adopted. And then finally, a semi-related goal is just a further fair housing choice within Iowa City. So there are a couple things that we've noticed with the zoning code that have been included in that 2019 Fair Housing Study. So some of those recommendations are also included in these amendments as well, just because fair housing and housing affordability are often related topics.
You know, as I was reading this, and then reading it again, and then reading it again, there's a lot here. It's very complex. And I thought, as we are talking about this tonight, I mean, I feel like what you want from us is some feedback on things that we go, "Oh, I really, I don't think I could ever get it behind that," or "This sounds like a good idea to me." Is that right?
Yeah.
And could we, like, do them one at a time, and then talk about that one? And then at the end, talk about all of them, excuse me, together? I just, for me, it would work better if we could sort of take it in smaller bites instead of...
Yeah. I was initially thinking doing it by kind of each of these subheaders, but we can do it one by one, I think, as well.
Oh, that's what I mean, the five subheadings.
Yeah.
So we'll do the number one...
Do like three at a time, and then, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Let's go.
That sounds good to me. So the first is looking at increasing flexibility for a range of housing types. This is partially in response to some of our recent efforts with Form-Based Zones, where we're looking at trying to encourage a diversity of housing types within each neighborhood. So looking at lifecycle housing, where you can, you know, grow up in a neighborhood, and then move in that neighborhood as a young adult, live there long-term, and retire in that neighborhood, if that's something that you want to do. But we're also looking at trying to encourage housing types that might be more financially accessible to low-income households. That's not to say that these will produce affordable housing by the definition of the code, but the goal is to produce more affordable housing and increase the housing supply, which, on the whole, can help bring down the cost of housing overall. So the first standard that we are proposing is staff is to allow duplex and attached single-family uses throughout single-family residential zones. So currently, and the way that I have it organized is current standards, proposed standards, kind of why we're thinking about it. So currently, in the lowest-density single-family residential zones, RS5 and RS8 duplexes and attached single-family uses are only allowed on corner lots. Now, staff is considering allowing those throughout the RS5 and RS8 zones, with a goal of providing additional flexibility to include these housing types in more neighborhoods.
Can I just ask what a single, what an attached single-family is?
Sure. So attached single-family is where you have a single unit on a single lot, but that lot abuts another single unit on a single lot. So sometimes they're called zero-lot line units.
Okay, all right.
In the case of RS5 and RS8 zones, only two are allowed to be next to each other. So it's similar to a duplex in an RS5 and RS8. The difference is, instead of being on one lot, they're on independent lots, but they're abutting.
Got it, yeah. Thank you.
And looking at some flexibility with these is partially because we used to have more of these prior to our 2005 zoning code update. It used to be a more widely-allowed housing type, especially in the RS8 zones. And we saw a real drop-off when we adopted those, and with a goal of trying to encourage diversity of housing types within each neighborhood, that's why we're looking at allowing these throughout a block. Second is to allow townhome-style multifamily provisionally in an RS12 zone. So RS12 zone is the high-density, single-family residential zone. It currently does allow up to six attached, single-family townhomes, but it does not allow townhome-style multifamily. And so this comes back to, single-family is where they're on independent lots, but you have multiples in a row. So you might think of townhomes in Philadelphia, for example, probably less dense than a place like Iowa City. But if it was on one lot, but looked identical, it would not be allowed as a multifamily use. So our proposed standards is to allow up to six side-by-side townhome-style multifamily uses in an RS12 zone, again, with the goal of providing flexibility in the types of housing that's allowed, and in lot structure with little impact to the appearance of a street. And so when I say that, before you is an example. One of these is attached, single-family. One of these is townhome-style multifamily. And if you were to guess, I assume you couldn't tell which one has units on independent lots and which one does. The answer is, the one on the left is actually a single-family, attached, single-family development. The one on the right is a multifamily development. And most of our townhomes that we see are multifamily developments, and I think part of that is because it allows flexibility in lot layout. So what we're proposing is to allow the use on the right, as well as the use on the left. But with little difference in visual appearance. Third is to allow ground-floor multifamily uses in most commercial zones by special exception, but then also to provisionally allow multifamily uses in the community commercial zone, also called the CC2 zone. So currently, multifamily uses are only allowed on the ground floor in very specific examples in the central business district zones. They do require special exception. They have to meet some standards. Special exception is where it's reviewed by the Board of Adjustment and must meet some general approval criteria, as well as specific approval criteria. On the other hand, multifamily uses in the community commercial zone on the second story is only allowed by special exception, even where it might look like your standard town square area. So what we're proposing is to provisionally allow multifamily in CC2, but then to also provide a path for multifamily on-the-ground-floor uses by special exception for multifamily. And the rationale is, first, it simplifies approvals for vertically-mixed-use buildings. And so when I say that, if you have commercial on the ground floor and residential above, that's something that we typically encourage in most commercial zones, but we don't do it, or we add additional barriers in our current processes for CC2 zones. So it'd be simplifying that to match other commercial zones, but then also providing an opportunity for horizontally-mixed-use developments, where you have a multifamily building in a commercial building on one lot, but that would not be otherwise allowed under our current zones. You would have to have separate lots, you'd have to have separate zones, so it would be allowing some flexibility in the way that those mixed-use developments could be arranged.
I was confused by that, thinking of the development that's going in across from the fire station off Dodge. I mean, there's a commercial building there that has residential above it.
Yep, and it worked... Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. I was going to say, and they need a special exception for that.
Oh, okay.
And they did receive their special exception. The other example of a CC2 that recently required a special exception was the coffee shop up on North Dodge Street required a very complicated special exception that had to...
I remember that.
Yeah, it was very challenging to make it work, to the point where we had to work through some additional amendments to the code to be able to allow it. So it's situations like that where, you know, if you can allow those administratively in places where you want them, it makes sense to allow those multifamily uses. And then where there's ground-floor commercial, you know, you want to make sure that you have some standards to ensure that it's a good fit for an area, a commercial area. Not all commercial areas are going to be a good fit for multifamily uses. So again, in those cases, you would have a special exception with approval criteria that would be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment, and they would make that determination. So we do have some specific approval criteria that we would think about in terms of, you know, wanting to make sure that you're not harming the character of a commercial area, but other than that, trying to provide additional flexibility. So that's what we're looking at.
Say, for instance, and this is not in the realm of anything that I think is going to happen, but I read about cities who are trying to reimagine what, they have a lot of vacant office space now, because so many people are working from home. So imagine that the new building that Midwest One built, they say, "We don't need all these offices. We're going to take a floor of this and turn it into four apartments." And would that have been allowed before, and would it be allowed under one of these changes?
So that would be a Riverfront Crossings district.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And if it was above the ground floor, it would potentially be allowed if it met the right standards. In the case of the standards that are part of that building, I don't think it would be allowed, because you need independent entrances and a number of other things.
Okay.
So there are other barriers in the way, and we're not proposing to change most of those.
Okay.
But the goal is to simplify the process for some, not all, situation. You know, we're taking our steps forward.
And I'm just trying to say where, and, you know...
Yeah. Examples that I would think of, if you could think of a place like the Sycamore Mall, like if they wanted to do multifamily, they'd need a special exception currently. This might allow multifamily above a ground level, for example.
Okay.
Or with the proposed amendment, by special exception, they could maybe put a multifamily building in part of the parking lot, with the commercial use being the rest of this space. You know, you could think of something like that.
Or say if Kirkwood leaves that building.
Yeah, or if Kirkwood or Pepperwood Plaza wanted to put in multifamily, they'd currently have to rezone and some other things. So it depends on how they structure it, how, you know...
Sure. Okay.
And then finally, looking at regulating assisted-group living uses consistently with multifamily uses. In, primarily, it's different in RM12 or low-density multifamily zones, but also in commercial zones. So compared to multifamily uses, assisted-group living, which is like nursing homes, or homes where folks live not independently, where they have assistance in their life chores, but it's a group living use, and it does require additional approvals and is generally allowed in fewer zones than multifamily uses. So the goal, or the staff's proposed amendment, would be to treat those more similarly to multifamily uses in where and how it is allowed. So that would include things like allowing it in the same zones as multifamily zones, allowing it provisionally in the RM12 zone, or the low-density multifamily zone, instead of requiring a special exception. And then also, to stop allowing it in the intensive commercial zone, which is a zone that doesn't allow household uses. So it seems like, in terms of that, residential uses generally aren't compatible, so not allowing assisted-group living in that is part of the rationale for that. But also, providing a greater variety of living arrangements without really impacting the character of zones is the rationale behind this. So that's kind of the first set of four. I know that we kind of...
Yeah, so that's number one. So let's...
Yeah, so if you have any questions...
Or feedback.
Or feedback.
My question goes before that, and that's how you figure low income.
Billy, will you, will you...
My question goes before that, where you figure what low income is. And when you're using this area median income of $90,000 as low income, how, I mean, we know, you know, and I know, that if you've got a family of four that considers themselves low-income, they're nowhere near $90,000. So even if you use 30% of that, it's still way out of anything being affordable. So is there any way that can be revisited, even, we're using the HUD example, but is there any way that can be revisited to make it more affordable for people that need it?
So in terms of this first set of amendments, you know, we're not really considering that. It gets more to when we get towards the amendments that encourage affordable housing specifically, that's income-restricted, and rent and/or sales price-restricted.
Well, you know, I saw all of that, the, you know, stuff you have to apply for, but when you, your base is there, then, in my opinion, that's what we need to talk about before we can talk about anything being affordable for low income.
Yeah, and I actually wanted to say, I had the same comment, and I want to make a note that there is a difference between median income and mean income, and I think that's where we all get confused, because I didn't understand it before. So I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the median income is like right in the middle. So if we have one person in the city making $10 million a year, as like the said, then that person would bring the whole median income of the whole city up, right? And then the average is more like, more reflective of our economy.
So I think you're flipping it. The median is the one where it's the middle value, so if you have outliers at the top, they don't affect it.
And balance...
And then the average or the mean, this uses median, but it is, HUD calculates based on family income, but that's, and did you have something that you were going to say?
Okay, because when I, when I Google, because I also Google, you know, the numbers, and it's like, sometimes it comes up as $30,000, sometimes $48,000, and it can be, that's per household, but if you do it per person, it's even lower than that. So I don't know how, how did we come up to the, like, where did you get the $92,000?
So HUD calculates it based on the surveys that they put out, and they, I believe they get surveys of the median family income, they use it to extrapolate for different sizes of households. They have a very detailed methodology that I don't know, other than that generally, but it's based on sampling within a given area.
Okay.
But that's typically, when it comes to our affordable housing programs, that's usually what we use to determine that.
Okay. I don't know if there would be a way to, you know, to change that, because I also feel like she said that that's not really reflective of the city's economy. And that's how I feel.
Yeah, and I think we heard a lot of these same concerns when we met with our Neighborhood Services staff, who deal with the financial side of the affordable housing problem. And I think for our, for the amendments that we're proposing tonight, we're really trying to think about what's in our purview, what as planners, what can we do in terms of land use and zoning that can impact housing in our community. And a lot of the amendments that we're talking about aren't going to be for income-restricted units, where they have to qualify. It's really about thinking about ways to diversify our housing supply and increase our housing supply by changing zoning regulations. So we're trying to focus on those changes, because that's where we have, that's kind of our purview. So those are the amendments that we're proposing tonight.
Can I just go back to that, though? I understand what you're saying, but I want to make sure that I understand this, now that you've raised this question. Am I reading this right, that if an owner household of four makes 80% of $92,000, they qualify?
Uh...
Or less?
Or less, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
For owner occupied.
And for most of the things that we're discussing tonight, that's not even going to factor into this. I mean, that's going to factor in when we're talking about income-restricted units, where you could maybe, maybe it's a low-income housing tax credit project, maybe it's a Habitat project, where there's income qualifiers, and you could get a bonus or a parking reduction for the project, some type of, or affordable housing incentive. But for most of the housing that gets built in our community, it's not income-restricted, and it's not subject to those rules. But there are other things that affect affordability, and one of those is housing supply. So we're trying to identify ways in our zoning code that we could increase supply and diversity to help with affordability in some way, but again, it's not going to be income-restricted
Changing to a different question for a minute. Am I wrong in thinking that most of these things, if not all of them, are allowed in under the Form-Based Code?
That is, I'm not sure about the assisted-group living one, actually.
Okay, yeah, maybe not that.
That's the one that I'm not sure about, because it's, that's not a missing housing-type use. But when it comes to allowing duplexes and attached, single-family throughout, that is in the Form-Based Code, and in fact, we require it within blocks. When it comes to townhome-style multifamily, the Form-Based Code doesn't distinguish between the single-family or attached, single-family versus multifamily. It looks at building types. So that's kind of the direction we're trying to move with this. And when it comes to multifamily on ground uses, or on ground floor, I'm not actually sure. I think it is allowed outside of the first 30 feet of building area in the Main Street Zone, but every other zone, I believe, allows multifamily on the first floor. So it's a much more, where the Main Street Zone is shown on our future land use maps is a much more finite area, I would say, than where we have commercial zones within the city, generally.
Right. But realistically speaking, it's unlikely, or maybe it's not, that, for instance, the townhome-style multifamily is going to happen with either a single lot or multiple lots in an already-developed neighborhood, because it takes so much land, right? I mean, you have to tear down a lot of houses to get...
If you want to go back to the townhome style, that is just in one zone, the RS12 zone. So most of the areas that have, are not zoned are...
R5s or 8s.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, so complicated.
Yeah, and one way that you can think about it is, I guess, similar to what you see in the Form-Based Zones, the neighborhood edge, the T3 neighborhood edge, allows single-family and duplex uses throughout.
Right.
So that's kind of the RS5, RS8 equivalent. If you look at the T3 neighborhood generals, that's still the suburban transect, it allows single-family, some duplexes, it allows townhomes, and it allows sixplexes. But that allows stacked, versus this is only side-by-side. So this is a little more restrictive than you might see in the Form-Based Zones, but they are somewhat similar in the way that they're constructed. So I think it's easy to make that, those parallels.
I am personally in favor of more duplexes in Iowa City. I think it's an affordable way to get housing built, and I've wondered why I haven't seen them, and then I've learned, joining the commission, that... them, and then I've learned, joining the commission, that they were pretty restricted in where they could be built. But I'm pretty much in favor of that.
Is there any concern, and I'm following up on your question, and I'm not sure, because I'm not sure I understood the answer. Is there any concern that single-family homes will be torn down to make more money? You know, you can put, you can rent to two people instead of one.
Sure, that's a possibility, and it's something that we have seen, even in our existing zones. You occasionally get a home that's torn down and a duplex is built, like on a corner lot, or an RNS12 zone allows duplexes. Typically, we don't see much of that, given the size of the city currently. This would expand the range of houses where that could happen. So that's something that, you know, in our analysis, we wanna try and identify the number of homes that could potentially be converted to a duplex. One other barrier to that is private covenants, actually. So lots of parts of town have covenants that say this can only be a single-family area. In those cases, the private covenants would still prevent that from being torn down and being rebuilt as a duplex. So it's somewhat a hard thing to answer, but that's where we're hoping to have some analysis for you to help inform your decision with that.
I think neighborhoods would wanna see that, too.
Yeah, the other thing I'd add to Kirk's comments is especially in the close-in neighborhoods to downtown, we have a lot of historic and conservation districts, which would limit, or which would essentially not allow the teardowns that you're referring to, but it doesn't cover the entire area.
Okay.
A few questions, so related to the duplex, the 1A. Going from a corner lot to a single lot or a street-facing, has that triggered any design standard as far as setbacks or offsets in the, in the design that is not an issue on a corner lot?
Or, it does trigger different design standards. So the way that the standards are currently written in the zoning code for a duplex on a corner lot, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, but I can kind of cover it now since they're very related. When it's only required on a corner lot, you need an entrance and garage for each unit that faces a different street. Obviously, that's not possible when it's in the middle of a lot, so we would be looking at changing those design standards to facilitate mid-block duplexes as well. But what we'd be looking at is some way to still try to maintain an appearance that's compatible with surrounding homes, whether that be limiting the number of, the amount of garages on a street frontage, or setting back garage frontages, or limiting the number of entrances, or how those entrances are constructed. There are a number of standards that we are considering to try and make sure that it's still compatible, but it will require different design.
So those are still TBD on any changes?
We have general ideas, but yeah, so...
Question on 1B, on the RS12 multifamily on a single lot. Can you help me to understand what that ownership model looks like, being on a single lot?
Yeah, so usually it's condos, where, you know, they have some sort of condo regime that maintains the lot in the exterior, and then different individuals own different individual lots. So Cherry Creek, I think, is structured like that. In some cases, it could be that there is one owner for all six units, but I think, I guess I can't really, I don't have enough information to tell you which one's more common, but I've seen both arrangements.
Typically umbrellaed under like an HOA?
Yeah, or condo association, exactly. And sometimes you'll have multiple condos that are all under one, you know, kind of ownership regime, or it all depends.
On 1D, on moving the group living to outside of a CI1. So using, like Systems Unlimited on Scott as an example, so typically that'd be a CI1 zone, but a future state that would not shit that and would have to go through a rezoning.
So my understanding of that property is that it's not assisted group living, because folks aren't living there. It's more, I think it's classified as a special education use or something like that. So that wouldn't be affected by this. Where you see assisted group living is a place where someone lives longer term, not just like a place where you gather to get classes. So I don't think that they have any permanent residents on site.
So using that, and I was unaware of that, but using that, and let's say that was a permanent resident site, a future state that would not be allowed, is that correct?
If it's an existing use that's allowed under the zoning code, it could continue as a non-conforming use. If it isn't allowed under the zoning code, it wouldn't be allowed, it wouldn't be considered a non-conforming use, it would just be a violation of the zoning code. But if you do have a nursing home that's in a CI1 zone, that could continue under its current use.
Right, it just becomes, you know, a cost factor, of course, and then, what was the reason for removing it, was just because of a similar use?
Yeah, it's mostly because, in the past, we've determined that, you know, that assisted group, or that household living uses, or residential uses more generally, you know, aren't appropriate within an intensive commercial zone. So if that's the case, then it does raise some fair housing concerns about, you know, why would we allow folks who are assisted group living to live there if we don't think it's safe for other folks to live there? So that's really what it is. It's a matter of, if we don't think household living uses should be there, why should we allow other people to live there?
Okay.
If that makes sense. And it comes up later, too, in, when we talk about long-term community housing as well, the community service long-term housing.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments about the area of flexibility for a range of housing types? Okay?
Okay, thank you. So the second set of kind of criteria that we're looking at is related to modifying design standards. So these are things that, you know, we've implemented in our code to ensure that we create safe, attractive, pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. Obviously, that goal is still first and foremost in our mind when it comes to these sorts of standards. But again, when it comes to balancing the cost of compliance with some of these standards, with the outcomes, you know, we've heard since 2016 that there are some standards in our, in our design, that we require for design, that, you know, don't really elevate a design necessarily, but they do require additional costs that has impacts on the approval of those multifamily uses. And it does limit flexibility as well in terms of the design that a house might have. So the first one that we are looking at changing is modifying some multifamily site development standards with regards to, we currently require a two-foot base of masonry stucco or dressed concrete, if there is a wood building or a building that's not predominantly built of stone or stucco. And that's required in multifamily and group living uses. We also require that where a wall material changes from the front to the side of a building, that that wrap three feet around the side of the building. And we do require that for multifamily uses, we don't require that for single-family uses. So you'll often see on single-family uses, where you have the stone on the front of the building, it doesn't wrap around. And we've heard that these can be challenging, in that they do require additional costs to especially have a durable base and then also wrap around the side. So we're looking at removing these two standards to increase that flexibility and try to reduce some of those costs associated with that, while continuing to meet that intent of the multifamily site development standards. And really what it comes down to is, there are a number of ways to have good design. So one of these buildings complies with the durable base standards, one does not, but the durable base standards by themselves don't necessarily ensure, you know, an attractive building, but they do impose those additional costs. So in looking at the standards, the building on the left doesn't have a durable base, but it still has a high-quality design that's attractive, and that's something we want to encourage, but it wouldn't be allowed under our current zone to have it like that. You would need some sort of base with it. So it's really looking at different ways of reducing that standard to allow the flexibility to have something like that. If you want a durable base, or if you want a building made of stone, or what have you, you know, that, it's not like we would prohibit that, but it wouldn't require it. So that, those are two of the design standards that we've heard continually in our public input sessions that builders have concerns about. The second is tied to allowing attached single-family and duplex uses in mid-block locations. So like I said, the unit's main entrance and garage must face, each face their own streets, they're only allowed on corner lots. So we're looking at creating different standards to allow mid-block locations. The ones that we're currently considering are things such as limits on the number of garages that face a certain street, so you still could have corner duplexes with them on the sides, or maybe you only have two on one frontage, for example. Or if you set back the garages a certain amount from the front of the building so that they don't dominate the streetscape, and looking at entrances, you know, trying to ensure that those entrances are compatible, but that they still face a street, that they provide an attractive entrance, that sort of thing. So that's really why we're looking at this, is because we want to allow those uses throughout blocks in the RS5 and RS8 zones. And then finally, to simplify the process, to reduce parking setbacks for townhome-style multifamily. So this is a very specific one, it only applies in a handful of contexts, but right now, if you have townhome-style multifamily uses, you can't have parking for the first 15 feet of building depth, which makes a lot of sense for the front of the building, because you wanna make sure that the front of the unit is living space for the folks that live there, that it provides an attractive and engaging street frontage, not just garages. But what we're proposing is that for townhome-style multifamily specifically, that the building official could waive this without a minor modification on an end unit if it's on a street. Because currently, if you have, for example, attached single-family on a corner lot, you know, you often have the house in the front, you have a rear-facing garage with an alley off of it, but if that was multifamily, you would require an additional 15 feet of building area on that corner. So it's really providing an opportunity to waive that standard on corner lots for the end unit, to have it look more similar to attached single-family and to streamline requirements. Because currently, there is a waiver allowed, but it requires a minor modification, which is additional process. So that's what we're proposing, to allow a cleaner waiver from, reduce process to try and streamline that a bit. Like I said, very specific, but we've had some recent townhome-style multifamilies, so it's fresh on our mind, and it's something that we would like to simplify if we can. So those are the design standards that we're talking about. Do you have any questions on those off the bat?
2C, can you give me an example of what the, visually what that is?
I...
Can you go back to the townhome style one measure that you got?
It's not from the side.
Yeah.
But I could probably do it this way. Oh, come on.
Not to put you under the pressure, but...
Let me see if I can... It does make a lot more sense when I have an aerial of it, so I would appreciate that. Let's see.
You wanna go back to Scott?
I'm just gonna come up here.
Okay.
So let's say, for example, with this building, you know, when you have rear-facing garages, you know, that really is what you want on a building, but with the multifamily standards written as they are in our parking design section, it would require an additional 15 feet of building frontage there. So in this example, it looks like that wasn't provided, so it must have been waived by minor modification. And that is an allowable process that we have currently, but it does require additional process in terms of the way that those are approved. So it'd be allowing that administratively without, without public notification and a administrative hearing, which is what's required currently for that.
Thank you.
And is that just to make the costs more reasonable, more affordable?
It's to streamline the approval process, so it can occur faster, because with the administrative hearing and with the public notification, it does require, I believe by itself, an additional two weeks at the minimum, if not more, depending on if we have the, the things that we need. So it can delay projects somewhat, and, you know, what builders always tell us is anything you can do to, to make the process move faster, you know, that's what they'd like to see. That being said, there are boundaries on that, and we still want to ensure that we have appropriate designs and that we have appropriate review time. But in something like this, where it's, you know, something that's come up before, that's relatively minor thing to adjust, that's where we're requesting it, or proposing it.
It makes a lot of sense to me, like you say. I mean, you gotta look at a garage sometime, you know. I personally have no problem with garages in the front, but a lot of people do. Any other questions?
And it wouldn't, again, it wouldn't be to waive it in the front necessarily. So townhome-style multifamily in the front still would not be able to have parking in the front, because of the multifamily site development standards don't allow parking facing four.
I understand.
Attached single-family could, if the lot's 45 feet wide. So it's a little different still, but it's closer.
I would all be in favor of that, that 45 feet wide. Any other questions about...
I have, I have one more.
Yeah, yeah.
So why was the durable base part of the code now? I mean, is there a reason why it was there?
So I believe it's included as, you know, something that people find attractive, and, you know, when the, the standards were designed, I believe that they were initially designed for the, the Central Planning District, too. I don't know if that was included at that time, but sometimes you also see, like, if you have a foundation lifted off the ground, that might count as a durable base if it has patterning on it, for example. So there are some situations where the durable base makes sense. There are some considerations as well, where you don't want siding all the way down to the ground, but the building code also has standards about how far siding has to be off the ground to ensure that it's not gonna be damaged by mold or termites, or, you know, what have you. So other than that, the, my understanding of the multifamily site development standards is that they were adopted kind of as a package, and so I think it was included as, as one of those package components.
Okay, thanks.
And I have a question about duplexes. Duplexes don't just have to be, I mean, my traditional vision of a duplex is it's side-by-side, but it could also be vertical, correct?
Correct.
And we certainly have many older homes in Iowa City that have been turned into multi-unit rentals. So are they, they're not considered duplexes, they're just...
Those are considered duplexes.
They are considered duplexes.
It depends on what you mean by multi-unit. So if it's two units, it would be considered a duplex. If it's one unit with multiple bedrooms, it's still single-family.
Correct.
If it's converted to multiple units, then it would be multifamily.
More than three, three or more.
Right. And there's certainly many of those in the middle of blocks.
Yes.
Yes.
And there are also new examples of that, too. I know that up in Peninsula, they have some, you know, top-bottom duplexes. Our Form-Based Zones does also allow top-bottom duplexes, so...
Yeah.
And I thought duplexes all had to have, they were all separate buildings, not, they're connected, but they're still individual units, as opposed to the home where you have multi-families. Is that not correct?
So it can be either. It depends on, if it's a lot with two dwelling units, two principal dwelling units, it's considered a duplex. So that can be top-down, or it could be side-by-side. It doesn't have to be side-by-side.
But they're still separate units.
But they typically are attached.
Okay.
Yeah. They are two independent units, like you're describing, and typically attached.
But I thought Susan was saying, if there's multi-families in that unit, you consider it a duplex.
If there's two families in a unit, or in two different units, excuse me, two families in one building, that's what I mean, that would be a duplex. And our, yeah. And our rental code does have additional standards, like, we added additional standards, such as requiring permanent separation between units, so things like that. I don't know all the rental standards, but there are different standards for rental units, as well as from owner-occupied units. But you could imagine a situation where you walk into a vestibule in a house, and you have two doors leading into two separate units, and, you know, even a left unit or a right unit, or one goes upstairs, and that's one unit, and a second unit on the bottom.
But they're not separate units, they're...
Separate in the sense of the building code, where they're fire-separated and independent of each other.
They each have their own entrance that they lock.
Okay, okay.
It's their house.
It's the same thing as a multifamily building, you know, you walk in one door, and you have a hallway and multiple units off of it, but it's just two units.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to move on to number three? Okay.
Okay. So the next one is looking... Okay. So the next one is looking at providing additional flexibility to enhance the supply of housing. And the reason we're looking at this, well, there's a number of reasons why we're looking at this. A lot of the things that we're proposing are in our lower-density, single-family zones, again. And we're really focusing on those zones, because those tend to be kind of our default zones within the city for a number of reasons. Some of that is, you know, that's a density that people like to live at. Some of that is, you know, if, if you have a lower density, you might get less neighborhood opposition. Some of that is, is, is that's the way that it's always been done, you know, kind of, you keep doing what you do. So there, there are a number of reasons why it is, but it does have some impacts on affordability within the city, especially as you look at those lower-impact zones. At the odd, or at the edge of the city, where you have segregated single-family uses by themselves, and it's all single-family, that can be at odds with our city's sustainability and equity goals. So that's something important to keep in mind. But in some cases, we also have RS5 that was retroactively applied to historic areas of our city. So we do have a number of non-conforming, single-family lots within the center of our city, that don't comply with the zone that, that it is classified as. And in a number of cases, it does limit flexibility. So you see lots of planned development overlays a-as a result of that, that are required to create neighborhoods like you might see near downtown, which are desirable neighborhoods to live in. So we, we, we are looking at ways to try and expand the supply of housing, both in new areas and existing areas, and then also, at the same time, looking at things like accessory apartments, looking at our bedroom caps, things that do limit the types and the number of family arrangements that can live within a single dwelling unit, and trying to reduce the barriers to, to some of those different types of housing arrangements. So the first is looking at dimensional standards. Again, we're trying to align these with existing lots, trying to align them somewhat better with our new form-based zones in some cases, and then trying to ensure greater consistency by use. So I'd kind of group them into three general groups of how we came up with some of these numbers. So in terms of the RS5, single-family detached in other lots, our current standards are 8,000 square-foot minimum lot size with a 60-foot lot width. If you have rear access with that, that's reduced to 6,000 square feet and a 50-foot lot width. So our proposed standard would be to reduce our front-access, single-family for RS5, single-family detached, to a 6,000-square-foot lot and 50-foot lot width, and reduce the rear-access density bonus to 5,000 square feet with a 45-foot lot width. The reason that we're proposing that is because that aligns much more closely with some of those non-conforming historic lots that we have in our downtown. Just to give you an example of what that looks like, this is an example of two non-conforming lots on Morningside Drive, that are 7,000 square feet, 50-foot lot homes, zoned RS5. These are non-conforming lots currently. If you built a new subdivision with RS5 zoning, these would not be allowed. So that's kind of the lot width we're looking at for, or that we're proposing for RS5. And the 6,000-square-foot lot is what we have for the form-based zones as well, in our neighborhood-edge zone.
Could you go back to that picture?
Yeah.
What's the, I mean, you said these are 7,000 square feet, and you're proposing 6,000 square feet. So I, I'm assuming you're taking that extra 1,000 square feet off of depth, not width. Is that true? I mean, how wide is this?
This is 50 feet wide.
Okay.
So you would be taking it off the depth in this case. And the, again, the reason we chose it is because that gets the vast majority of non-conforming lots currently to conform with our zoning code. There are still some that wouldn't conform, that have narrower lot frontages. You find some like 42 or roughly lot widths, and those are kind of your classic bungalow homes that you'll see sometimes. But this would get the vast majority of non-conforming, single-family lots to conform. So that's really where we're looking at, trying to align it more closely with some of our historic standards that we had. In terms of duplexes and single-family detached, we are looking at RS5 and RS8 zones, in reducing the per-unit size. In RS5, reducing that to 6,000-square-foot lot, or it's currently a 6,000-square-foot lot with a 40 lot width, reducing that to 5,000 square foot with a 35 lot width. For RS8, it's slightly above 4,000 square feet with a 35 width, reducing that to 4,000 with a 30-foot width. At, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is get these somewhat closer to what we have in form-based zones, but to not have it completely match it. So this gets it closer to what you see in form-based zones, in terms of the lot areas. But it is still larger than what you have in form-based zones for our standards. So taking into account the fact that we are still looking at lower-density residential zones in these, but allowing slightly more units per acre. And then, in addition to that, we're looking at, in the neighborhood stabilization, RNS12 zone, allowing them to access a density bonus that we allow for other, single-family detached uses. So currently, lots in this zone have to be 5,000 square feet with a 45-foot lot width. This would allow them, with rear access, to reduce that to 3,000 square feet with a 30-foot lot width. That being said, if there isn't rear access, it still would be required to comply with that 5,000 square feet and 45-foot lot width, which is similar to our other RS12 and RS8 zones. It really is just where there's an alley, they could access the alley. And that would also allow some lots that are currently non-conforming to become conforming. And then finally, for our low-density, multifamily and medium-density, multifamily zones, reducing the lot width standard from 55 feet for a single-family detached unit to 45 foot. And the reason we're doing that is because that's more similar to our other standards for single-family detached uses in higher-intensity zones. So it doesn't really make sense to require a wider lot width in those cases. So really, the goal, again, is to try to create a greater supply of lots, create more flexibility in the arrangement of new subdivisions, and also bring things into compliance, and try to get closer to our form-based standards in terms of what we're looking at for, for lot arrangements. And then also ensure greater consistency by use, when we're talking about those multifamily standards. So that's kind of a, a big set of changes, lots of numbers. Apologize for that. But again, this is kind of what we're looking at for the RS5 lots. Second is to allow additional bedrooms for attached, single-family duplex and multifamily uses outside of the University Impact area. So currently, we do have caps on the number of bedrooms allowed for multifamily uses throughout the city, and that's three bedrooms for a multifamily use. For duplex and attached, single-family uses, that's four bedrooms. But we are proposing to increase out that outside of the University Impact area by one for each. So allowing four for multifamily, five for duplex, single-family attached. And the reason that we're looking at that is because a lot of this was created due to concerns with a proliferation of really large, multifamily residential units downtown, where they became essentially rooming houses for students, but they were called and classified as apartments. So we created this bedroom cap, but since that time, we've done a number of different requirements through our zoning code, through our rental code especially. So we require things like, if you want a rental permit, you know, only a certain percentage of your unit can be bedrooms. And you can't have it be half-bedrooms with a tiny little kitchen, that's basically another bedroom. You know, we have other standards related to the minimum size of bedrooms, so we do create, create de facto unit sizes where, you know, if you do have a five-bedroom unit now, you know, it's going to have to be big enough to accommodate a family within that unit, because we, we provide additional requirements for the amount of space that, that's required for the use there. So we have created additional standards to help with some of these things. And a lot of these issues are more, more impactful near the university, where you have a higher demand for rental housing. So that's why we're proposing to not increase the cap within the University Impact area, but instead allow it to increase outside of the Universal Impact area, to try and accommodate a wider variety of families, especially, or wider variety of housing types, especially away from downtown. So one of the complaints that we get, especially with townhome-style multifamily, is that, you know, we can only fit three bedrooms, but a lot of townhome, people who want townhomes want four bedrooms. And for whatever reason, they choose not to do attached, single-family. I think it's because of complexity with lots, and so they're just out of luck. They have to do three-bedroom, they can't accommodate as, as the market that's there. So really trying to allow those additional markets, and allowing more rental units for large families, which is something that we also can have problems with. Especially there are more affordable housing types, because single-family detached uses don't have a number of bedroom caps. So that's another thing that, that factors into this. So currently, those large households have to live in single-family detached effectively. But just trying to allow wider variety. And this is the University Impact area, so it is that area that's, that's closest to campus, or more historic areas of town, where you see more of that impact on student rentals. And that is also included as an exhibit in your packet, if you need to zoom in on those tiny little streets. And then finally, we're looking at trying to encourage accessory apartments in a broader variety of contexts, and then to reduce the barriers to construction for those accessory apartments. So currently, the way that we allow accessory apartments is that they are only allowed in owner-occupied, detached, single-family homes in certain zones. And there are additional standards that can create barriers to, to allowing these. That includes things like, you know, the number of people that can occupy it, the number of bedrooms, barriers about if it's in a detached accessory building, that it can only be 50% of the floor area of that, so there has to be another accessory use. That includes things like limits on the size of the unit. So what we're proposing is to try and more widely allow these uses, and to reduce those barriers, based generally on recommendations by the Johnson County Livable Communities Housing-Age and Team. So I included their memo that they provided for you within the packet. And they asked that all communities in Johnson County take some of these amendments to mind and try to incorporate them into their code. So the goal is really to provide these accessory apartments, which can provide more affordable housing types, and to reduce the barriers to them, to allow them more widely. So specifically, the things that we are proposing to change would be to allow them on any lot that allows a household living use, and does not contain more than two dwelling units as a principal use. So that would be single-family lots, and it would be duplex lots. It would also remove barriers, such as requirements for owner occupancy. There's a requirement for additional parking space that would be removed. It would remove a requirement that 10% of an accessory building's floor area can be added to a building to accommodate an accessory apartment. So essentially, it, it mostly has to be within an existing building. It would eliminate that requirement. It would eliminate the requirement that there only be one bedroom allowed within one, and that they not exceed 50% of the accessory building's floor area. It would also increase allowable size to 1,000 square feet, but we would keep caps on the size of the unit based on the size of the principal use on the site. So that's a little different than what they recommend, but we want to make sure that it does remain an accessory use, and not become an independent principal use. So we would cap the size of an accessory apartment that's in its own building to 50% of the principal use, or if it's in the, if it's in the building with the principal use, it would be to 30%. So, again, lots of numbers. It's easier when, when we actually present you the, the zoning code text amendment, where you can see the changes that are being made. But those are kind of the things that we're thinking about. And again, this is a situation where we really want to hear your feedback on some of these ideas, and I can kind of go item by item through this as well, since this is one of the, probably one of the bigger changes that we would be proposing. So those are the, the ones that we're talking about, in terms of additional flexibility to increase the supply of housing. So if you have questions, let's save accessory apartments for last, because that's probably going to be the longer conversation.
Well, my question about A sort of combines a question about C with it, because on one hand, it looks like you're reducing the size of lots, and on the other hand, you're giving people permission to buy, to build another building on that lot.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, which seems, I don't know, it seems like you're having your cake and eating it, too, in a little bit.
Sure. So they would still be required to comply with all of their dimensional standards that would be required. And that would include things like maximum lot coverage. So in most residential zones, I think it's 45% or 50% in multifamily zones. It would include things like setbacks, building heights, that we have for both principal and accessory uses. So it does allow an accessory use, in addition to reduce lot sizes for principal uses, but they would be complying with standards that any principal use would have to comply with.
So if it fits, you can do it?
Essentially. And if it doesn't, you can't.
I have a question.
And so it could be two stories?
An accessory apartment?
Yeah.
Accessory apartments can be two stories, but they would be limited to the...
If you have a two-story house on the lot.
Yeah.
I have no, personally, I have no problem with the lot changes. Does anybody have any questions about the lot size changes, or concerns?
I have a question.
Yeah, go.
No, it's, it's a question. So all these, it all looks great to me. But I was wondering, so all these changes, they seem to be favoring the developers, right? What would happen if we adopt all these changes, and then the prices of housing don't really go down? You know, like in 10 years, or like...
Sure.
There's not an assurance, like...
That's a possibility, but...
Just helping people, making more money.
At the end of the day, these changes do rely on additional housing supply to try and align it with demand. What I would suspect would happen may not be decreasing housing prices, but you might see housing prices stabilize, rather than increasing as dramatically as they have in recent years.
It's all about density, and if you can get more housing options, more competition.
Part of it, too, is as you reduce lot sizes, you know, you have less square footage, presumably for a lot, which decreases the, the price of the lot itself, the land price component. It doesn't mean that, you know, tomorrow you're going to get homes that are $300,000, but you might get some homes that are $300,000, or $200,000, or $100,000, probably not $100,000. I don't think that's possible under realistic.
I just don't want to encourage developers to dare, tear down what is existing low-income housing, and build multi-unit things that cost more.
Sure.
That's what I don't want to do.
Sure.
Well, could we, could we somehow protect low-income housing that is already built?
Well, I think, you know, when we, when we had the conversation about the development on Riverside Drive, I mean, in Benton, I, I think we expressed a lot of similar concerns, which is one reason that this group did not approve that, is that it would mean tearing down a number of units that, in this town, would be considered, you know, affordable rent.
Yeah. And really, one of the things that we focused on with a lot of these amendments are, you know, we're not really looking at multifamily for a lot of these, other than allowing them provisionally in commercial zones, or in the CC2 zone, having the possibility by special exception to allow them in commercial zones. Most, most of these changes are tied to detached, single-family duplex, attached, single-family, kind of your, I mean, other than single-family, you're missing middle housing types, and you're smaller, missing middle housing types, not even the, your, your sixplex or whatever. We're not really looking at that, other than for townhome style. And the, the hope is that, you know, you probably wouldn't see as much demolition of, you know, more affordable units, because units that could accommodate additional space aren't, aren't really included in this, in terms of that, if that makes sense. Like, you're not going to demolish a affordable housing complex, apartment complex, to put in duplexes, most likely, I don't think.
Yeah.
Other than any, you know, if, if you're trying to look for creating multimillion-dollar homes or whatever, that is required to pay for that lay-up price.
Right, right.
But that's a thing that could happen under our current zoning, regardless.
Sure, and does.
Does.
And has.
I got a question on 3A. So on the RSA, RS8 duplex, it narrows down to 30-foot width per unit. So a two-unit duplex, standard duplex, 60-foot total lot width.
Correct. And we do have standards about the amount of frontage that can be... And we do have standards about the amount of frontage that can be garages and some other standard, it's kind of tied to those design standards again. So when you're under 70 feet of lot width, or I think it's 80 feet, actually, it does require, you can't have more than, I think it's 60% of the frontage be garage. You know, there are design standards that kick in with smaller lots, but these are minimum lot sizes, so it allows the opportunity for those smaller-sized lots. And you could imagine a situation where you have rear access where those things might be more possible.
And this doesn't have anything specifically with rear access, right? This is regardless, but the other standards come into place on the garage.
Yeah, so rear access isn't required by these changes. This just reduces minimum dimensional standards. So they can be built bigger, they can be built with rear access, they don't have to be, as long as they comply with the other aspects of the code.
A little tight, so.
So these accessory units are, in essence, taking up the yards that we now appreciate.
Sure. So the city does also have open space standards for a minimum amount of open space within the rear yard. Those would also, like I said, the existing dimensional standards still have to be met. So you couldn't just have house with an accessory apartment and no yard. You would have to provide a yard in compliance with our standards.
So I'm thinking of the homes that they built out by the airport, where they just kind of slung them over the hill and built the units that, they had like little cups at the, or that's what it looked like to me. And where I am, up Kimball Road, there's really, that's, until they tore down Ellen Whiters' home, I had no idea that their house was just kind of hanging on the hill. So how do you, how safe are those? I mean, how do you make sure that those units that are being built are going to be safe?
I guess, one thing I would say to that is for any new development that has sensitive slopes that are regulated, only a certain amount of them can be impacted unless it was approved by city council. So protected slopes can't be impacted, critical slopes can be, but only to a certain extent. So part of that isn't, I mean, part of the rationale for that is probably safety, but it's also, those are sensitive areas that typically have woodlands and habitat, and it's a way to protect those sensitive environmental areas of the city as well.
And I guess I'm thinking of the area behind my house now, which is, I mean, one neighbor on the other side of Prairie de Sheen owns all of that, those woods back there, but there's a serious slope. So if he wanted to build accessory apartments back there, could that happen?
If they met the standards, it could happen, but it sounds like, in this case, that's unlikely. I would also say that the open space requirements that preserve some open yard, I believe that they require that it be usable open space, so you can't just have it be like a creek or something where...
Well, parts of it would be, I mean, it's, there is some flat land back there, but it goes into a serious slope, into a creek.
And some of those areas, too, I don't know when that was subdivided, but some of those areas are protected by conservation easements that wouldn't allow development, so it's probably case by case. If there's no conservation easement there, they may have the potential to build something in the back. But they, I mean, even without this amendment, they could do it now, probably, if it's RS8 or RS5. We already allow accessory apartments in those zones. So that's not really changing where they're allowed, it's just changing the standards that are associated with how they're regulated.
Am I remembering correctly that in the packet, it talked about two cities that had made some changes in this regard, Des Moines being one of them? Am I remembering that right?
That might have been in February, in your packet, that you, because you talked with the planning and zoning about, you know, that we were working on these a couple months ago.
Yeah.
I don't think it was...
I just wondered if they had been in place long enough to have any kind of feedback on what the result has been in...
Yeah, my, I would suspect not, because those ordinances for Des Moines and Cedar Rapids are very new. We've had, we've allowed accessory apartments for a much longer period of time than those two jurisdictions, so their ordinances are new.
Right.
And they've been highlighted in recent press articles, too, and I think some of the, like, AARP and other groups that are really advocating for more accessory apartments have highlighted those as kind of model codes as well, so.
My understanding of the recommendations that were provided by the Johnson County Housing Action Committee for their Livable Communities Group, my understanding is that that's based on what AARP is trying to propose for most cities, but that's kind of what we based a lot of these changes on, were on those recommendations provided by them. So I can't speak exactly to how they came to them, but that's what we're trying to base it off of.
I'd also like you to talk about the owner-occupied part, and why, I mean, I understand that, first of all, if the main dwelling on the lot is owner-occupied, can anyone be in the ADU? Or are you saying, I assume that's the way it is?
Yeah.
But if the main dwelling is a rental, then what you're saying is someone could build an ADU and put someone entirely unrelated to the rental customer in the ADU, right?
That is correct.
Yes.
What we're saying, right now, our code requires one of the owners of the property to live on-site, either in the accessory apartment or the main home. It doesn't matter, either one. What we're proposing now is to get rid of that requirement, so both units could be rented, and the owner wouldn't have to live on-site.
And has there been demand for that?
Well, the rationale provided by the Livable Communities Group was that the practical impact of that occupancy requirement is that it inhibits the construction of most ADUs. So in a lot of cases, people that might otherwise build ADUs just don't do it, because they may sell their units in the future, and they would need someone who wants to live there and also rent it out in the future. It could be a situation where, you know, there's someone that would add an ADU if they didn't have to live there, and they can't, because the code doesn't allow them to. So it's really a matter of trying to encourage the construction and remove those barriers to construction for ADUs. So that's kind of the rationale behind it. The goal is really to increase the supply of ADUs to help provide additional housing opportunities for folks. That's the goal. So it acts as a...
Well, of all the things here, this one I have concerns about. I mean, I'm willing to keep thinking about it and talking about it, but...
So it seems to be a servant's quarters.
Or a mother-in-law that are going to stick me in the ADU.
At least you're not living with them in the house.
Well, that's true.
Extended families are how I often hear of ADUs being used, especially like a kid who's moving out on their own, but they can't afford anyplace else.
When you think about it as extended families, then why can't the owner live in one of them, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, they can. They can do that still. It's just that, there are other people that might construct it if there weren't an owner-occupancy requirement.
Right.
Or it may have started out that way, and then the owner decided, okay, I don't want to live here either, so.
A few questions kind of related to the ADU. I see it one of the notes regarding the design standards, and we might not be to that yet, but similar on...
Sure, so I can talk to that. The way that we are proposing to do it is that if the ADU is in an existing building, then it be designed to match that existing building. However, if it is like an independent, you know, small ADU in the back, that's not part of that building, it wouldn't be required to match it. So the goal is really, if it's part of the building, it should match it. If it's not, you know, it can be its own building.
Okay, so let's say they have a single-family house in the front, alley access in the back, they do an ADU over a garage in the back. In that case, it wouldn't have to necessarily match the single-family.
Correct. But we are thinking about it might have to match the garage. That's one of the details that we're working through. We just want to make sure that you don't get like an addition that's made of metal siding or something, where the, you know, that just looks really incongruous with the building that it's part of.
I know ADUs have been in the code for a while. Has there been any feedback on what's prohibited those from really being leveraged? I know west coast, I got a sister in Portland, ADUs very common out there, however, here it hasn't been adopted as much.
Yeah, Anne, have you heard feedback? I mean, the feedback that we hear is that, or the feedback that I, my personal feedback working with the ADU code, is that it can be challenging to get an ADU that meets the standards that we have. So it's always a pretty detailed process to walk them through our ADU requirements. That's been my experience with the few ADUs that we've had, or even, especially things like, you know, the ADU can only be 50% of an accessory building, and so it has to be above a garage, but then you need stairs up, and do those stairs count as part of the ADU? Or people thinking that you can't have an accessible ADU where they want their elderly parents to live. And it can be beside a garage, but it can only be 50% of the building. So some of those things can detract from people's understanding of the code, what's allowed, those sorts of things.
Yeah, I guess just to add to that, I think parking, the parking requirement is a barrier, and the fact that it needs to be attached to an existing building. We've had some, you know, homeowners who want to do just a standalone accessory apartment that currently isn't allowed in our code. I think those are the things that we have control over, but other things are just like financing and, you know, getting the money together to construct one.
Has, Anne, I don't know this, in Iowa City, and I know Corville had something at one point, because common use for something like this is Airbnb, not only just a rental, but like a short-term rental. I know there's been a lot of push towards making sure that that was related to the owner-occupied and not turning it into kind of a party house or otherwise. Moving away from owner-occupied for the primary or even the ADU residence, I mean, has that came up? Does the city have code related to Airbnb or otherwise?
So we do, but the state preempted most of our ability to regulate it. So if they rent it for less than 30 days, and that use is allowed, we can't say that they can't use it for a short-term rental. That's the current state of things. We do require rental permit to check life and safety things, but that's about as far as our short-term rental standards can now go, or, yeah, about as far as they can go. So that's been a challenge, to be honest. Unfortunately, it's not something that we can do a lot about now at the level of the city.
Okay, good to know. On 3B, does a bedroom over 225 square foot count as towards the two-bedroom of the four-bedroom max?
It does.
Okay, so if they got a primary, let's say you're going for a four-bedroom, are we eliminating the max or retaining the four-bedroom max?
We would be increasing the maximum by one, so it would be four-bedroom for multifamily, five-bedroom for attached, single-family and duplex.
So if a single-bedroom is a 15 by 15, then by default, that...
I think it's greater than 225, but if it was bigger than that, then yeah.
Okay. What's the logic behind that?
I believe it was, we passed a suite of changes to our code when we lost the ability to regulate by household size, so I believe it was tied to that, I'm not 100% sure. But I believe that was, yeah, part of the suite of changes.
Has there been any thought given to the whole bedroom thing, sort of outside, is this, it's all outside the university impact area? So inside the university impact area, the old rules stay?
That's what we're proposing, yeah.
Okay. I mean, there's, you know, there's so many single-family houses out there, people can't afford them, but that have five or six bedrooms, I mean...
And single-family aren't subject to the bedroom caps. It's just multifamily, attached, single-family and duplex.
So they don't become boarding rooms?
That was the, yeah.
Original thought.
Any other questions on these items?
Yeah, one more, sorry. On 3A, so let's say on RS5 or RS8, I mean, we're increasing the density. Can you have any to understand, not only is there green space required on that lot, but on a new development, is there a new development green space requirement from like a centrally located park, kind of like you see Peninsula or otherwise, you're increasing the density but have a park or otherwise?
That's a great question. With new developments, we do have an open space requirement, so it's calculated based on the allowable density of the zone, based on the household size at the given time, and then based on our demand for park space that we calculate as three acres per thousand residents. So we calculate that at the beginning. Sometimes it's paid as a fee in lieu, which parks use as to provide new park land. Sometimes it's provided as a dedication of land within a development. It kind of depends on, you know, parks' interpretation of the demand for different parks within different areas, as well as what other amenities are surrounding a given development. But we do have that public open space requirement.
And that's a usable park space. It's not like a dry retention pond can count towards that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, are we ready to move on to number four, everybody? Okay?
Okay, so this one is specifically tied to regulatory incentives for affordable housing, so this is where we get into some of those definitions a bit more. But the goal is really, the other ones are to increase housing diversity, try and provide a greater supply of housing to bring down affordability. This is specifically targeted to income-restricted, affordable units for low-income households. So it does have rent limits, it has sales limits, and it has income restrictions. But what we're looking at is regulatory incentives, similar to what we looked at for the solar amendments, and the rationale being largely that a lot of these are allowed in things like our form-based zones or riverfront crossings, but we don't have anything for most of the city, and most of the city is where we want to encourage these things. So the first is looking at a density bonus for affordable housing units in conventional zoning districts. Currently, we do have additional height that you can get from riverfront crossings. We have a density bonus in form-based zones, like I said, but we don't have one here. So what we are proposing is creating a 20% density bonus, where 20% of units are affordable housing for 20 years, and then also looking at additional regulatory flexibility within some bounds that would be allowed as well, if there are challenges with a site. We would be looking at administering this through our existing processes that we have, so most likely that would be site plan review, but it could be subdivision if it's a single-family development. It could be an OPD if it's an OPD development. It just would kind of depend, because they would have to indicate that they meet all the criteria for it. But the goal is to help offset the financial costs of providing affordable housing by providing additional density and additional rent to help cover those costs, so cross-subsidizing essentially within a development. The other one that we're looking at is looking at parking reductions for affordable housing. So again, currently, riverfront crossings, form-based zones don't require parking, but this reduction isn't available in most zones. There is one for some central business zones as well. What we're proposing is that we would exempt income-restricted, affordable housing in all zones if it serves that purpose for 20 years. And so what this does is reduce the minimum parking requirement. It doesn't mean that they, you know, if they want to provide parking, they can. It doesn't say that they can't provide parking, but it's that they don't have to provide the parking if they don't think there's the demand within their affordable housing development. So again, the goal is to offset that cost of providing affordable housing through an indirect subsidy of parking, which can be an expensive component of developments. And those are really the two bonuses that we're thinking about. They're similar to other ones that you've heard recently, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Some of these are still kind of being hammered out as well, but...
So again, why are we only talking 20 years? We're giving 20% density bonus for 20% of the units, so that's going to stay, but the time a person is going to be there is limited to 20 years.
Yeah, so we're basing it off of similar requirements for other similar programs. In this case, a lot of this is similar to what you get in the form-based zones. In this case, a lot of this is similar to what you get in the form-based zones. It's also similar to if you're subsidized by home federal funds, that's also a 20-year for new construction. So that's kind of the basis of it. A lot of it is set by kind of our existing standards that we have at the city.
So we're not coming any closer to solving the problem of affordable housing, we're only putting it off for 20 years?
Well, I would argue that increasing the supply of affordable housing and the density generally would help offset the supply, or offset affordability over the long term, but...
But if I'm in this unit...
It would only be reviewed for income-restricted folks for 20 years, yeah.
If I'm in this unit for 20 years, after 20 years, I either opt up to pay the additional unit cost or move out. That's what, kind of what we're saying, right?
I wouldn't say that we're saying, I mean, I would say that after 20 years, a unit is probably going to be more affordable than it would be if it was new construction. Really, we're trying to get over the new construction hump, which is the portion where housing affordability is the least.
The other question to that is, if I get this unit and I decide in 10 years I'm moving out, the new tenant would have the additional 10 years, correct?
Correct.
They would only have 10 years then as opposed to...
Well, I mean, if they proved that they were a good tenant, they could presumably live there as long as the landlord was willing to work with them. It just wouldn't be reviewed by the city at that point.
Is there a reason, I assume that developers wouldn't go for this, if you'd have said there's no limit, you know, there's no 20-year limit, there's just...
In perpetuity?
Yeah.
So some cities do in-perpetuity standards. My recollection of many of those are that it's tied to requirements. We cannot mandate rent restrictions on units due to state code, but we can incentivize affordable housing. In perpetuity, my other understanding of that is that that poses some challenges, because then developers never use it if they don't think that, you know, they'll make their profit off of it or whatever.
Right, so that, that doesn't do you any good.
Yeah, the goal is to find the right balance with incentives and, you know, getting the housing to actually occur. Whether or not this is enough incentive, it's hard to say. Again, like the solar amendment, you don't really know until you kind of test it out, but this seemed like a reasonable request and similar to some of our other provisions that we have.
Could we say like 10% density for 20 years and then 20% density for forever? So they won't go for it.
As the commission, you can recommend different combinations, however you'd like to construct it.
40% and forever, like in perpetuity, like...
You could recommend that certainly.
But someone has to be willing to build it. I mean, I'm just saying, we're not going to get what we want because we don't have what it takes to build the units. I mean, that'd be...
No, I understand.
I think 20% is, you know, but back to the, what is affordable? Is it $90,000?
So it would be, you would have to, if you're owner occupied, it would have to be less than that. If you're renter occupied, it would be the 60% AMI.
Almost 70.
70 odd, yeah.
So a family of four with a $70,000 income...
Could presumably qualify for income-restricted housing, yeah.
I'm sorry, these would be, for the terms of here, this is market-based rates from affordable housing standpoint, right? Like, as far as the 20% of units are considered affordable housing, that's, they would be market rate or they would be...
20% would be rent-restricted, so they would be based on fair market rent, or if it's a sales, it would be based on the HUD sales price. Those are based on just below the market rent, essentially. So it's below market rent, but the remaining 80 would be...
Whatever.
Market rate, yeah. And we wouldn't review those.
Is there, the 20% density bonus for 20 years, is there other municipalities that have used this kind of model and it's been successful, or is there any kind of calculation that goes into this 20-year return? You know, again, I understand as far as trying to accomplish like a long-term affordable housing, but if it doesn't get adopted just because it's not financially viable, we'll never achieve it. And also, will there be a fee in lieu?
There would not be a fee in lieu. This would only be provided for onsite affordable housing. There would still be the fee in lieu option for riverfront crossings, however, because that's an existing, yeah.
In riverfront crossings, where you've had this exemption from the parking, has there been any issues? Like, there's not enough parking, or...
You know, the one project where it came up is on South Dubuque Street. The Housing Fellowship did a low-income housing tax credit project. It's 100% affordable, and they didn't have to provide any onsite parking, but they did provide some. So I don't, that's the only project that, well, then we have projects where there's onsite. I guess I'm thinking about Delray because it was a low-income housing tax credit project, and they provided all units to be affordable and still provided some parking onsite even though they didn't have to. For the rest of the projects in riverfront crossings where a portion of the units onsite may be affordable, they already provide so much parking onsite that I don't think it's an issue, because it's just required for the market-rate units, if that makes sense?
Right, thanks.
And especially as we're looking, because we're looking at applying this, especially outside of the downtown, where on-street parking is more readily available, so the hope is that, you know, some of it would be use of the street parking that is allowed but may not be used as much, which provides traffic calming and some other benefits, so...
Everybody's going to be taking the bus. Any other points we want to add for number four?
Can you show again the next slide, please, about the parking? I think I didn't understand that one. Yeah, can you explain that again?
Yeah, so it would be that there is no minimum parking standard for affordable housing.
But for 20 years only or for forever?
There'd be no parking standard forever. It would have to meet, we would essentially review it for the same period of time that we would review for income and rent restrictions.
Yeah, I got it, same.
Okay. Number five.
So number five is tied to fair housing, which, like I said, is related to affordable housing. It's not the same thing, but it's adjacent enough where we wanted to incorporate some recommendations from our fair housing study. So the first is to create a process to request reasonable accommodations from the zoning code. You know, the cities have to provide reasonable accommodations from our policies, from our regulations that we have for persons with disabilities, but right now, we don't really have a separate established process for it, so it's not always the clearest that it exists even, or that that's something that people can ask for. So we, really, this just creates a reasonable accommodations request process, makes it clear that you can request it, that there's a defined approval process for it that follows fair standards, and to try and streamline the ability to grant the request. So in some cases, we have workarounds currently, like you can get a minor mod for a wheelchair ramp, for example, in the front setback, but this would change that somewhat, where you don't have to go through an additional very public process about your disability, and instead, you know, you apply directly to the department and we can review it and give a feedback or grant request. So that's what that is. It's a relatively straightforward one. And then finally is to reclassify community service long-term housing uses as a residential use. So community service long-term housing is currently defined as long-term housing operated by a public or nonprofit agency for persons with disabilities. It's classified as an institutional use and is only allowed in mostly commercial zones. It's regulated differently than residential uses is what it boils down to, despite the fact that it being a place that people live long-term. So what we would propose is to eliminate it as an independent use and regulate it instead as a residential use, with the understanding that accessory supportive services, as long as they're serving those that live within this development, would be considered an accessory use and allowed. So in some cases, the accessory uses would be allowed if you're in, for example, a multifamily zone. This would allow these uses in multifamily zones where they're not currently, and with supportive services provided to staff or provided to the residents. But if the supportive services are open to the public, that becomes a zoning code violation because it becomes a general community services use because other people are coming onsite. So it's similar to the way that we would look at, you know, a fitness facility that is only available to residents of a building or all the pools and all the things that you can have now with residential uses, but in this case, it's supportive services for those living there to ensure that those who have needs are getting the needs met that they need, and allowing it in a wider variety of contexts. So the goal is really to try and, again, treat groups of people like persons with disabilities like anyone else, instead of creating a separate class for them that's institutional, that's not considered residential, and making sure that they can be integrated through the entire community. That's really the goal of the way that it is. With this one, it does create a few challenges, because it would also include removing this use from CI1 zones, intensive commercial zones. There are also some other differences between the way that this is regulated now and other residential uses allowed within zones. So there are two of these uses currently allowed, ones in a CI1 zone. That could continue as a non-conforming use. Primarily, it would just mean that it couldn't expand, or if it ended its use, you know, it would have to be brought into compliance with the zoning code if not reoccupied within a year. The other case is in a commercial zone where residential uses are allowed, but this use is at a density that is higher than would be allowed by residential uses, so that would also become a non-conforming use. So the challenge is that it does create two non-conforming uses, but it would allow these uses more generally and would treat this group as any other residential use that might occupy, you know, a neighborhood. So that's where it brings up fair housing situations. It's part of our 2019 Fair Housing Choice Study as well.
Are those two exceptions been notified?
Yes.
Okay.
We've chatted with them, and they're operated by one agency, and the agency is very supportive of the fact that as long as they can continue to operate as they are, then they're happy, and as they're looking at future facility locations, if it broadens their horizons, then that's something that they're supportive of.
It makes sense to me. I mean, that's their residence, so they should be able to live in a residential area. Any other comments or questions? So what's next?
Great question.
Did you get some feedback that you thought was, do you need more from us?
Well, I think, I was going to open up generally as well. I'll just go over next steps. I did want to mention that we got some public comments as well. You've got those in your, before you, they were emailed to you. We'll continue to take public comments throughout the period, because like I said, today's kind of the background introductory discussion, so that we can breeze through this the next meeting. And August 2nd is when we really want to have the review where you would make a recommendation to council, so we'll try to get you the text amendment as early as possible so you have time to process those changes.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
This, the Housing Action Team, who is on that team? Is it mainly the developers or...
So I was part of it when I was the community development planner, so there's representation from the county, senior living specialist, I think, or maybe they have the housing specialist now. It's been a few years since I've been on it, but it does include some developers, includes folks interested in fair housing, it includes affordable housing providers, it includes Johnson County and City staff. Kirk?
I'm Jessica Andino, Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition Executive Director. Just to call back to aging specialists at Johnson County Social Services. There's some realtors on there. There is a representative from the housing, the HBA. Trails is on there, and other service providers that are interested in having affordable housing specifically related to the aging population in Johnson County.
I don't know if she needs to say that on the mic for the people taking the minutes.
She probably does.
Yeah, you know, I guess we, if we're going to have public comment, then maybe if she could come up at that time, if that's okay with the chair, vice chair.
Acting chair.
Well, I didn't see that we were going to have public comment.
I think, I think it's up to, well, I guess it is an item on the agenda, and we have several people here tonight if they would like to speak on the item.
Okay.
Don't we usually do that after the presentation, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's where I was just going to say, council adoption, we usually have two public comments, you have those, and otherwise, questions, comments, or if you want to hear from the public.
Okay, we'll open it up to a public comment. Please come up to the microphone and state your name and write your name down on the paper that's there. And you're limited to, I forgot what you changed it to.
Five minutes. Three minutes.
Three minutes?
You're the chair, you can...
Is it five in our new vials?
I thought it was five.
We just changed it.
I think it's five in our new...
There aren't that many of you. If you want to talk for five minutes, you go ahead.
Well, hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Andino. I just talked, sorry about that, out of turn. I'm the Executive Director at the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition, so I took that position in February from Sarah Barron, so some of you may know Sarah as well. I'm on the Housing Action Team for Johnson County livable communities, so if you do have any questions, you can obviously find my email, that's on my website, but I'm happy that you guys are considering anything that is related to affordable housing, as you have all discussed today. It is definitely, definitely, definitely needed in our community, not just in Iowa City, but beyond, and so thank you to staff for putting a lot of time and effort into this, and I would be more than happy to engage with the commission individually, or however you guys see fit, to hopefully make some of this actually happen in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. It's been fascinating listening to the conversation. My name is Jim Throgmorton, I live at 814 Ronald Street, and I am co-chair of the Northside Neighborhood Association. So the first thing I want to tell you is that we're paying close attention to what you're doing in this particular endeavor, and we'll surely have comments come next August, or come August the 2nd. And I've just taken, been taking notes and trying to absorb what you have mentioned. I think the most important thing I want to say, or there are two things I want to draw, I want to emphasize. First, the rising cost of housing in Iowa City clearly is a problem. It needs to be addressed. Increasing supply is part of that, there's no doubt about that. I don't think it's going to solve the affordable housing problem, but it's an important component of trying to address the problem. Beyond that, I would say, in the Northside neighborhood, we already have a great deal of diversity in the house, in our housing. I think approximately one-fourth of all this, quote, "single-family owner occupied" buildings in the Northside neighborhood cost in the $100,000 range or even less. There are just a few buildings that run less than that. So one concern I have just right off the bat is that a developer might have a strong incentive to come in and tear down existing single-family houses and replace, that are already very affordable to the people who live in them, and replace them with housing that's more expensive. I have a concern about that. Beyond that, "single-family owner occupied" housing is a term that's used in the property inventory viewer, that tells you all about who owns property, but they don't really mean owner occupied. So we have about almost 500 single-family owner occupied units, properties, in the Northside, but at least a quarter of them, probably more, are rental units owned by LLCs and LCs and corporations. So there's a problem with the categorization there. I don't want to take up too much of your time, though, but it's an important initiative, we're paying close attention. We're paying close attention, and we have concerns. Thanks.
Thank you.
First of all, thank, oh, sorry, James Carey, 721 Brown Street, same neighborhood. First of all, thank you, all of you, board members, for your time that you put into this. I know you don't get paid for it, and any decisions you make will probably make someone happy and someone unhappy, so thank you for that. One of the things I thought about, I got this information and I tried to read through it, educate myself before I came here tonight, one of the things I noticed, you're being, it's a pretty big ask, you're being asked to make some big changes, and to some extent, so 180-degree change from what has been followed for the last couple decades, going into the density issue. One of the things I didn't hear, though, was there was any statistics on projections that if this, if this change came, how much housing would be created. I don't know, that seems like something that's a reasonable ask for the commission. So, not only how much square footage or many units that these changes will actually create, but a projection, I understand you can't say for certain, where you see that this will actually bring down costs, particularly in rentals. The more I looked at this and thought about it, I struggle with the idea that this will actually be impactful. Not all of it. I'm taking bullet point four and five out, but one, two, and three on actually bringing down rents. One of the questions was, why isn't there more accessory? I think, Mr. Wade, you said, why isn't there more accessories in our neighborhoods, for example? I mean, if you do a detached accessory and say it's a thousand square foot, I think was being put forward as a potential size, $175 to $200 a square foot, you're talking about a $200,000 house you're building from scratch in the backyard, right? And if you were to make that cash flow, now, if you have a family member and you want to put it in there, I understand that that works, and that's part of the family dynamic, or a friend, or however it works, but to actually do that as an owner and say, I'm an owner, by the way, to say that that's going to work and cash flow in some way, it's not. If I'm put myself in the shoes of a landlord, and I have no issue with landlords, that's what they do, and they have every right to do it, and it's legal, and that's how they build housing for people. But if I'm a landlord and I put my landlord hat on, and I own multiple homes, this is very attractive, because if I'm doing, like, say, a three-year rolling capital build on to my buildings, I'm going to add that structure in the backyard because I can make that pay over years, and I also have the ability to deduct. I have, you know, we as homeowners don't get to take that off, so what I'm seeing in here, and I get it, is it's a real incentive for landlords to pursue all these options that are put forward. The problem with it is, if I build a $200,000 accessory apartment in my backyard up on Brown Street, I'm not going to charge $500 for that apartment. That's going to be a $2,000 apartment. That's someplace people want to live, and that's a nice-sized apartment, and it's brand-new construction. Some of the other things that were shown earlier, the new housing, the condos, I get it, this is sort of a long-term look, but on the short end, none of, there's no new buildings that will probably result in low-income, excuse me, housing for lower-income individuals and be reasonable. They just said that at the city council, they turned down that potential project they were going to build over by Twin Image, and I think Councilwoman Burgess said, you know, you can't build low-income housing, it's just not the way it works, and she was absolutely right, and that could have been an impactful build, that was going to be a large development, and that was turned down. So, one of the other things I want to talk about, I mean, there's a million things, but just sort of focus on the economics. I'm well under five minutes.
You are. You still are, yeah.
Very quickly. I think one of the things that wasn't discussed here, too, that needs to be thought about, it was alluded to, I believe. If I'm a landlord and I want to be, own multiple properties, that's the business I'm in, if you make it more attractive for me to buy one of these properties and add some, the property's my investment, right? The ground and the buildings, and you're going to make it more attractive to me now because I'm going to be, to get my income, which are the bodies. I get the bodies I could put in there right now, and if I can add more to an accessory building or an add-on, or get six, 12 apartments instead of six, I'm going to do that. The problem is, that's going to drive the cost of homes up. That is going to be a real competition against people who want to buy homes, who want to be owner-occupied homes, and that's what unfortunately we should be considering. I know the planning and zoning can't control that, but it's incredibly, excuse me, incredibly unfortunate that this whole conversation is really driven by rentals and not ownership. And I think what you're going to see when this thing goes into effect is that it's going to be a very, very strong incentive for landlords to buy more homes, pay more for them, because they could spread it across multiple properties, and again, they have the ability to move things around with taxes and incentives. But at the end of the day, I think you're going to actually push the price of homes up in Iowa City, and you're going to take homes out of the reach of people who should be buying them. There's two things that bring people out of poverty that we all know, that no question work, it's education and homeownership. Maybe everybody doesn't pursue education, but homeownership is definitely one of those things, and it works for everybody. I don't see how that's going to be possible going forward, considering the fact that, you know, $2,000 for a single-family home rental, that would cover a mortgage, property taxes, and home insurance on a $250,000 to $300,000 home, but we're not talking about that. Instead, we're talking about trying to just bring that rental down. I think this will have a very, very adverse effect and put homeownership out of the reach of a lot of people. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
I'm the Johnson County Director for the Hawkeye Area Community Action Program. The mission of HACAP is to build strong communities and help people build the skills that they need to become successful, and we see homeownership and just living in safe, affordable housing as obviously a primary, a primary way to build those strong communities and live lives that people want to live in our communities. I'm not going to pretend to stand up here and say that I understand all of this, but I just want to applaud you all, sitting back and listening to you guys talk passionately about increasing affordable housing in Johnson County and in Iowa City specifically. It's so important, you know, time and time again, day in and day out, that is one of the huge needs that we see, people coming for assistance. People need safe, stable housing where they can raise their families and again, build those strong communities. So, again, thank you for having this conversation, and we look forward to helping in any way that we can.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Davis. I own 845 Dover Street, which I just learned is a single occupancy zero-lot duplex, and I just want to thank you all for your time tonight. I'm also with Domestic Violence Intervention here in town. I help people who have been displaced due to domestic violence find a new place to live here in the area, so very impacted by the housing scene in this town. I'm also part of the Johnson County Affordable Housing Committee, as well as the Local Homeless Coordinating Board. Just reading through all of the points, the proposal, and looking through all the points today, it seems like everything that is being proposed is not going to be enough to solve homelessness in this town, but it seems like each step is a step in the right direction, so I did want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dave Moore, and I'm at 425 Davenport Street. I've been there half as long as most of the buildings in that neighborhood have existed, so, and I lived there because the home that we were in was affordable a long time ago. I don't have any notes, and I, most of what I had thought to say has been covered by Jim Carey and Jim Throgmorton, but I did want to say that when we moved there, it's still a great neighborhood to be in, but I call it the Lower Northside because it's, it's not Brown Street, you know, Davenport Street, it's not, it's not Ronald Street, it's not the neighborhood we remembered when, we were, it was all owner-occupied, and we all had young children, and they all held hands and played all the way to Horace Mann every morning. It's, there's one large, what do they call them? Investment owners, LLC, that owns over 100 properties in that neighborhood, and every month, you turn around and they own another one. And I came up here mainly because I wanted to draw attention, I don't think this is moving in the right direction for affordable housing, I think it's moving in the opposite direction for affordable housing. And I came up because I wasn't intending to say anything until I read Ann Furtz's letter here, and I tried to work for Ann when she was running for city council. Unfortunately, she didn't win, but I really wanted somebody on city council who really knew planning and zoning, and I thought it would have been a great asset to the council, and Ann just knows it up and down, and it's the two central paragraphs of her letter. Basically, I would agree with the last paragraph, that she says, "I ask the neighborhood associations to be added to the stakeholders involved in this process." That's what I hope you can do, is to add the neighborhood associations. The third paragraph, she's concerned about proposed changes that can affect negatively fixers-uppers in these small neighborhoods. Now, I haven't read every sentence of this text, but I trust Ann, and she's drawing an analogy, she's drawing a line between these amendments, if that's what they're called, and a negative effect on these fixer-uppers, and I just want to testify that she's right, they're all over the place, these small, slightly in disrepair, disrepair fixer-uppers, especially in Goose Town and in Lucas Farms. And I know, too, just in the last year, that the LLCs move too fast, and they get them, they get them quick, before anybody else has a chance to get them, and then they take them down, and they build big, and those places are not cheap. The second thing she cites in here is investment owners and a group of students can pool their funds and pay far more than housing as an individual or a family, and I'm just here to tell you, if you're unaware of this, you probably are aware of this, but it's happening, and it's happening all the time, just on my block, which now has two owner-occupied Just right around the corner, the two houses directly north of the auto shop on Gilbert and Bloomington, used to be called Russ's Northside, those two houses were apartment houses, and they were bought by this LLC, and they, and it just sounds wonderful, they're now single-family homes, and they're four- or five-bedroom, single-family homes, and I wondered which was more affordable. They used to have two apartments in each one, and I called up my friend, Jim Ellison, he said, "Use his name tonight if you speak." I said, "Jim, I'm not going to speak, I've been here before, and I'm not so good at this," but, he said, "Use my name." And Jim was paying, before he had to leave, he was paying $450 for his ground four apartment. Now, that might not have been sustainable forever, but it was definitely low-income housing. And those four bedrooms, if I had to guess based on what I hear from students who I know, because I tend to befriend them, and they're, most of the students in my neighborhood are fine, you know, they're around $900 a room, you know, so that is probably what happened in that house, right there directly north of the gas station. It went from a couple apartments going for $400 or $500 to four or five single bedrooms that are going for $800 or $900 apiece. And so, I just think this is moving in the wrong direction. I hope you take pause, move slow, and the main thing is what Ann said, which is to fold the neighborhood associations into this, and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no further comments from the public, we'll move on the agenda to consideration of meeting minutes, June 21st.
I move they be approved.
Seconded?
I seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Planning and zoning information?
I have no updates.
I had a question, and now I can't remember it.
Got to write those down.
I wrote all these other questions down tonight. There's something about a building, this building built somewhere, but I can't remember what it is. All right.
Good job.
Yeah, let's get through adjournment first.
If it comes to you, just email us.
Yeah, I will. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed? All right.